Good afternoon. I call this meeting to order. The mayor is out of the room for a few moments, but he'll be back momentarily. So if we could all please rise for the invocation by Councilmember Jones and remain standing for the pledge.
Let's power heads, please. Dear heavenly Father, we know that you are always with us. We ask that you be with us this evening as we consider the affairs of this our great city. Guide us and direct us in the decisions that we make, that they may be in the best interest of all, the people of Virginia Beach. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, we don't need to have the roll call, correct?
That's correct. Councilmember Rouse is absent.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion for the certification of the closed session.
So moved.
Still moved. Second. Motion by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Moss. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucy?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
I'm going to abstain. I wasn't here for the session.
Thank you. Councilmember Moss?
Aye with the notations of earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rouse is absent. Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer is absent for this. One, two, three, four, five, eight to zero. You have certified the closed session and been in accordance with the motion to recess.
Thank you, and one abstention. All right, the chair will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the special session, February 9th, 2021.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moss, seconded by Ms. Wilson. Any additions or corrections? Okay, if you can call the vote.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucy?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse is absent. Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer is absent. Nine to zero. You've approved the minutes of March the 2nd.
Chair will entertain a motion for the approval-
Sorry, of February the 9th.
Okay.
Sorry.
Chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the special session, February 16th, 2021.
Still moved.
Motion by Mr. Moss, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Jones. Any additions or corrections? If you can call the vote.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucy?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse, absent. Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer is absent. Nine to zero. You've approved the minutes of February 16th.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to call on City Clerk Amanda Barnes to read the instructions for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Tonight, we have both in-person speakers and speakers participating via WebEx. In order to limit the number of people in Suite 5 at any one time, in-person speakers will remain in Suite 4, where they will be able to view the meeting on monitors until called. For ordinances and resolutions, I will recognize in-person speakers first, calling the first speaker and up to three additional speakers to avoid any unnecessary delay between speakers. Each person whose name is called may enter Suite 5 and must remain socially distanced until it is their turn to speak. Each speaker must exit Suite 5 after providing their comments and may return to Suite 4 to finish viewing the meeting. After all in-person speakers have been called, I will then recognize the speakers participating via WebEx. For planning items, I will recognize the applicant or their representative first, whether they are in person or participating via WebEx. All other speakers will be recognized as previously stated. Applicants or their representative may remain in Suite 5 for their rebuttal time. Speakers participating via WebEx, please mute any additional devices you have in the room to avoid any unnecessary background noise and/or the possibility of echoing. It is important that, once recognized, please wait two to three seconds to begin to ensure council hears your complete remarks. Please begin your comments by identifying yourself. Also, do not ask, "Can you hear me?", as only one feed is open at a time, to minimize the chance of echoing, and as such, you will be unable to hear a response. Again, speakers will be recognized in the order which they register. Please note, if the speaker does not respond, or if a technical issue occurs which renders their comments unintelligible, I will move on to the next speaker. Mayor, members of council, are there any questions about the process? Thank you. I'll turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Wood, who will read the speaker policy and then begin moving through the published agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I want to remind everyone that the City Council Speaker Policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal portion of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by council at the time you are called. When speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number for the clerk to record. We have several items with only one speaker signed up. As such, the city clerk will call that speaker and identify each item they have registered on. The speaker will receive three minutes to comment on each item. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have signed up to address. Finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the City Council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. So, Madam Clerk, I know we have a speaker for several items, so if we could go ahead and start with that.
Sure. Barbara Messner. And once Ms. Messner is in the chamber in Suite 5, then I will go over the items that she has signed up to speak on that are on the consent agenda, otherwise. Thank you. on the consent agenda at this time.
Welcome, Ms. Messner.
So, on ordinances and resolutions, it's everything except which numbers? Pardon?
3 and 6.
3 and 6. And it's three minutes per each one, correct? All right. It's almost impossible to get ready for this, to be in that other room, and I have lots of notes and things to read. Okay, investment of city funds. It is not your duty to invest in private developers. It is our money. And when I listened to that, it said that the applicants can stay in the room, but the speakers can't. So we have to lift everything up and come back and forth. I emailed you all about problems with parking and overlapping the meetings. Okay, so, like I said, you've been mismanaging. We have $3 billion debt, and I opposed all these revised policies without public input. This is the first time we've been able to speak in about a month. Two, resolution to approve a contract extension with the Virginia Beach Services Board and the Commonwealth regarding mental health and substance abuse. If you cared about substance abuse and mental health, you would not have subsidized all the breweries which do not have restaurant license and who get to stay open. Most of them were never closed, but restaurants like Wendy's and Abbey Road Restaurant, so many have almost gone out of business. So, and you use COVID money for city projects and paying city salaries. The ordinance to support the 2021 Ignite-
Ma'am, that's on to be heard.
That's the one that's pulled, okay. To rescind the previous award of franchises to Bird Rides, Skinny Labs, and it's crazy to have all these alternative scooters. There've been serious, serious accidents. Public safety is a huge issue, and one of the things that I brought and noted was August, I believe, August 8th, 2017, Chief Severa talked about retention of police officers. We can't have a safe city if we don't have a fully funded police force. You're talking about hiring 18-year-olds because you can't retain. You shouldn't be using air money to train police for six months that can go anywhere else in the city or another state. That is not fiscally responsible, and they have, and I think people should live, who work here, should live here and pay taxes here and have an investment. Five, ordinance to extend provisions of the ordinance previously adopted on March 31st to ensure continuity of government during the COVID disaster. I wasn't able to speak when you voted on this. We haven't been able to speak for a month. You voted to take out over $3 million for future pandemics, but the money comes from the federal government and the state, and it's not properly managed. It's been a year. It's been a year. You've never closed the beaches, the hotels. I've been by the Sports Center many times, and school buses are from all over the country. You're talking about all these wonderful athletes. Some of them, you know, go to private schools because their schools are closed, and then even Air students have to pay. There's plenty of room over there for social distancing. That's where the COVID, for the people who want to do all that. To overlap that with this meeting is ridiculous. Six is pulled. Seven, ordinance to grant up to $150,000 from City Council's Special Pandemic and Vaccine Support Reserve to Oceana Volunteer Fire Department. Raid the purchase of five support vehicles. And authorize donation of a truck. All of this stuff should be, you should have prepared for all of this, to keep using COVID money to buy things, and we shouldn't be having any events. The sign over there says "Events". You're having events. You're bringing people in, they're staying in all the hotels, from, I think, one event was 2,500 students, and the kids here, they have to join a group to be able to go there. I wanted you to go watch the other night. You can't go unless you have a ticket. You can't even watch the videos unless you join, I think it's the Mile, whatever. Okay, and appropriate almost 7,000 from last year's budget, this past budget, emergency medical services, and reimburse auction proceeds to Plaza Volunteer Rescue Squad. When I went by this weekend, Air Rescue Squad is at the Sports Center. It's, there's events, they're busy all the time. And that shouldn't have been built here, because it's in the direct path of the jets, and not only the Oceana jets, but when the NAS, not NAS Oceana, but the airport and NAS Norfolk repaved their runways, those planes come over here. We have non-stop planes. You know, the noise and the traffic is horrible. And that Sports Center is the second, it's the arena that didn't go in. It's paid with education money, PPEA, public education money. That's supposed to be classroom, not sports, not to fill hotel rooms year-round. And, yeah, I've spoken on this. This was years ago, during the arena. Air police officers on the street, firemen on the trucks, no tax dollars to private developers, no tax dollars for council vehicles, no to Light Rail Studies, no tourism trolley shuttles. I mean, you take up the parking over there, you could ride a shuttle. Y'all are more important than the citizens. That's eight.
Okay. Okay, I believe that was it, Ms. Messner, on that.
All right.
If it's okay, I'm going to go ahead and open a public hearing on planning, but Ms. Messner, I do want to apologize for my delay getting here, but I went in and just got my shot. So, thank you very much, and I did wait in line for it, and I waited my turn, but it's important that people, you know, come and get.
I don't know what that has to do with-
Okay, I'm just explaining to you why I ran late.
Number six is the only item not on consent, ma'am.
Okay. So now, we're opening the public hearing on planning.
Ms. Messner, for planning, number six?
Okay.
That's the only one that's not on consent.
That's what I didn't understand.
That is the only one on consent. I'm sorry, I'm saying that backwards.
And planning, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven additional short-term rentals. You already admit, the first one is 1612 Tallwood Manor Court, Centerville, which is Ms. Wooton and Mr. Dyer's areas. Okay, we've gone over this. I don't know how many times you had a meeting in here on short-term rentals. People have given their input. There are too many short-term rentals. How many people are, I think there were like 2,500, 2,600 the last time Mr. Tahan finally answered the question? How many of these people are staying in our neighborhood that are coming here for the sports? I know that most of them are staying at the Doubletree, but they go to the grocery stores, they go everywhere. You know, all you do is ask them to wear a mask. Their parents have to wait in the car, and they have to watch on the video unless they buy a ticket. All you care about is revenue. If you cared about whatever this pandemic, flu, plague, whatever it is going around that some people are getting, mostly elderly, you would have done something a year ago. It's been a year. So, and as Ms. Henley stated, not only do we not have staff on planning, but the Health Department has never answered one email that I've sent in the last year. They've acknowledged, and they said within two days, but in the last year, not one reply. One, one director for two cities. That's ridiculous, if we really have a pandemic. And I appreciate your excuse for being late, Mr. Dyer, but I do think having town halls and having a press conference and answering questions for the city would be nice after a year. Okay, two, short-term rental-
Ma'am, it's only number six is the one that you're supposed to be-
Okay, that was it for, you know, the consent agenda.
Wait, it was three minutes for each planning item.
Only number six.
Only number six is on consent.
Oh, only number six is on consent.
And the rest are going to be heard, Ms. Messner.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, thank you. Do you want to approve the consent agenda? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the-
No, no.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move for approval under the consent agenda, under ordinances and resolutions. Item H1, resolution to adopt a revised policy, raid investment of city funds. Item 2, resolution to approve a contract extension between the Virginia Beach Community Services Board and the Commonwealth of Virginia, raid mental health developmental and substance use disorder services. Item 4, ordinance to rescind the previous award of franchises to Bird Rides Incorporated, Neutron Holdings, Inc., Skinny Labs, Inc., and VO Ride, Inc., and direct the city manager to resolicit proposals for such franchises. Item 5, ordinance to extend the provisions of the ordinance previously adopted on March 31st, 2020, raid insurance continuity of government during the COVID-19 disaster. Item 7, ordinance to authorize a grant of up to $150,000 from the City Council's Special Pandemic and Vaccine Support Reserve to the Oceana Volunteer Fire Department, Incorporated, raid the purchase of a fire support vehicle, and authorize the donation of a truck. Item 8, ordinance to appropriate $6,948.10 to the FY 2020-2021 Emergency Medical Services Operating Budget, raid reimburse auction proceeds to the Plaza Volunteer Rescue Squad, Inc.
Open a public hearing on planning.
Under planning, item I6, William Joseph Wright, Jr., for conditional use permit, raid short-term rental at 911 Pacific Avenue, Unit B, in the Beach District, noting that Mr. Moss and Ms. Henley are voting nay. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second. Now, Ms. Wilson, could we call for the vote, please, on the consent agenda?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucy?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse is absent. Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to zero, you've approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wood.
Okay, at this point, we do have a unique circumstances with the speakers, you know, combination with WebEx, so we're going to ask the City Clerk, Amanda Barnes, to read her instructions. Oh, she did it already? Okay. All right. Did you read the instructions? Oh, okay, so we're good to go. My apologies. Okay, at this point, we're going to go to ordinances and resolutions. Number 3, ordinance to support 2021 Ignite Series and Disparity Forum, and appropriate $2,325 from the general fund balance to municipal raid offset expenses requested by Councilmember Wooton.
There are no speakers signed up.
Okay. Okay.
I apologize. I apologize. Barbara Messner, she has signed up on every item, so I need to call her back in.
Ms. Barnes, since Ms. Messner's speaking on every item, maybe she should just stay in here. Is that possible?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and let the clerk, you know, control the flow.
There's no reason to jerk me around and have me go back and forth like that. Okay, item 3, Ignite Seminar, disparity forum, additional money. This has been going on for years. You cannot use air money and have events for select races, religions, groups, special interests, voting blocks. You cannot invite them to help with businesses, you cannot give grants to some of them and not other people. What you're doing is outrageous. It's just like the national level, only they're too busy with other things. Yeah, it was at the Weston. We paid for five parking garages for Amada Hoffler. Where's their money going? Since I don't have that much time, I hope anyone who's listening, which there really aren't that many people paying attention anymore, will go to the August 8th, 2017 meeting on public safety by Chief Severa. Okay, like I said, you can't patronize, I mean, one year you paid for C-TAC to have 2012, to have summer school. Air kids are not in school. Your priorities are spending COVID money, and you switched from, wait, which one? From all your banners, I don't even know where the camera is today, now you're having special things for, and COVID donations. COVID's the latest thing. Where's all the money for the victim families? And you spend all this money to have parking spaces here at the convention center and all these things, but you don't, over there, where all these events are going on, all these national events, none of the parking things, the counters are counting the cars. I saw tons of buses over there when I drove over. I didn't have time to stop. You know, the events are going on year-round.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Messner. And apologize for any inconvenience, but we have rules that we have to follow.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay. Okay, at this point, I'll ask for a motion in a second, and then we can start with discussion.
I move for approval of the Ignite Business Series Resolution to reappropriate funding back into the budget for the remaining events for 2021.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion, and now it's open for discussion. Ms. Wilson?
I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions, and obviously, this is money that was already appropriated, and you wanted reappropriation. Are you planning on having any of these events that have to be paid for at other places, like, are you going to have them free opportunities in city buildings? Like, are you going to have them free opportunities in city buildings?
Like, well, like before you paid money for the Sandler Center.
This is, I think, one, I originally submitted the resolution. It was understood that I would have the events in different places throughout the city, and some do include the Sandler Center, also includes the ATC Center and other areas that I feel are good to, across the city, to engage business owners.
And we had.
That hasn't changed.
So you're going to be paying for facilities when we have free facilities in the city?
As was already indicated in the initial resolution, that was the same. It was the same in that resolution, and it remains the same today.
And there was really no budget to how is the money going to be spent?
I'm sorry, say that again.
How is the money going to be spent?
As in noted in the previous resolution, it's spent to ensure that there is proper support for event information that's associated with the event. So it could be materials printed. It could be speakers, refreshments, and all of those support items that are associated, as you know, with events of that nature for business seminars. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Moss and then Mr. Jones.
I have a, my question is really due to the city manager, and then I'll have some comments to make. And in reference to lines 27 through 30, I'm just trying to make sure I have an operational understanding of the terms. It says here to offset expenses. These expenses, future expenses, are obligations that have already been executed for which we now need authorization for money for? I take it these are for future expenses?
To Councilmember Moss, I think therefore, and I think from the conversation with the councilwoman, it's for future expenses. I think there were.
Fair enough. My question goes next is, what budget unit or what budget line item, when we make this appropriation, will show the deposit for this money should we make it? So when we transfer from the general fund balance to something, what budget line item, an existing one, or will a new one be created that this money will be deposited in?
To Councilmember Moss, I think it will go to the municipal council line item in the clerk's office. Amanda, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And can I, can I ask, then I guess it's a question, if I could, Mr. Mayor, direct it to the city clerk? This would then be its own line item with only this amount of money deposited in that line item? Would that be correct?
I believe there are already additional funds in the line item from a previous appropriation by council. I think it was $5,000. If I'm not, I would have to look at my budget. I'm sorry, but.
What I'm trying to get at, if I can, Mr. Mayor, in council's indulgence, I'm trying to understand what baseline revenues existed in the budget that we approved last May 12th for this particular item that are in the city clerk's budget? How much of that has been expended? How much is left? Then, of course, we would add to it. So I realize we don't have that tonight, but that's what I'd like to know. So that's, now I understand it's future expenses, which is fine. And I don't really have an issue with what we've, what's in those line items, but I'd like to carry forward my discussion if I could, since we don't want to get answers to those questions, I don't think, tonight. But to line items 32 through 35. Now, this is a little bit more problematic, and which is why I'm going to suggest that the question be divided on the motion, and this is the reason why I think so. Clearly, in line items 27 through 30, we're talking about something happening in this fiscal year, and we're citing the general fund balance that exists in this fiscal year and making an appropriation to a particular issue. These next set of sentences deal with establishing a policy. As many of my colleagues know, we have a carryover process that we use each and every year. When the budget ends on 30 June, there's encumbrances, there's other things, and we always end up, some accounts end up with money unspent and not encumbered. We then have the closeout of the books. They kind of sweep up all the unappropriated, excuse me, all the appropriate but unobligated money, and then the manager goes through a carryover process and comes back and gives us a recommended ordinance on how those money should be spent, which this would be one of those items. Now, because if you read the words, it says, and this has nothing to do with the Ignite process itself, it's the process that we have to deal with funding, no matter what the program is. But if you look at this, it says, he's hereby directed to include unspent amounts from the previous appropriations in support of 2019. Well, that budget was the one we've closed out. We've had a CAFRA report. We didn't have any residual monies left in accounts because that was all swept up, or you wouldn't be able to get an audited book. So we don't have any unspent funds for the year that's ended. All that's been adjudicated, and we had a vote in September. You may recall some things, we captured all that sweep-up fund, and we have an ending fund balance. So I don't know materially how that could be correct, that we could go back to 2019. Now, the other part deals with money that we, if we added this to the base, whatever that is, and there was unspent money on 30 June of this year, this is directing the manager that this would have an exception to our carryover process, and we're directing the manager that he's to include what his estimate of that is in his budget that he recommends to us in end of March. That's my read of that interpretation. My only concern here is I don't think we should set a precedent to overwrite our traditional carryover process, that we should let that play out. And then in September, if we find out that he didn't give us money in his recommendation for Ignite program, and we want it to be in there, that just takes this body to say we want that to be a priority. But more importantly, I'd like to think that he knows it's a priority, and he fully funds it in his budget request in dependent of the ending fund balance. So the reason why I'm asking to divide the question is I'd like to support 27 through 30, but I'm not going to support a process exemption and establish an exception to a process that we have that works to direct the city manager to fund. So that's my discussion. I just needed clarification from the manager that I understood it correctly. And I would, I realize it's not a mandatory request, but I am requesting that majority of this body grant me the division of the question so we could vote on two issues that are materially different.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious, why was the money left over?
So this resolution is here today because when I went to start planning the Ignite Business Series for this year, I received an email that stated the balance that was left over. And it was not the initial amount that was delegated to the Ignite Business Series and Disparity Study Forum. And that's something that you have to understand as well. It's actually two events that this funding is supporting. And the initial resolution was $3,000 for two events that happen annually. With the Ignite Business Series, it's three, and with the disparity study forum, it's one. So you have a $3,000 budget supporting about four events annually. The money, the email that I received said there was the money, the timeframe had expired. And so the money that I, that was allocated went back to the budget, to the general funding budget. So money was left over because I had not spent all of the money. And so there was money from, that was allocated in the previous resolution that council supported in, I believe it was 2019, of $3,000. Well, I didn't use the total $3,000 within the specific timeframe that it was allocated for. So then that money went back to the general fund budget. Now, I have to say, when the resolution was prepared for 2019, I was not aware of that. And I don't know if other council members were or not, but I was not. And so I had to have a meeting of clarification with the city manager, the also Mr. Stiles, as well to kind of clarify what happened as it relates to when the resolution was prepared and how I got to this point with having to resubmit this resolution to reappropriate the funding, if that makes sense.
Have you identified the specifics of how the money's going to be spent?
Yes, and that, those specifics were identified in the 2019 resolution, which, again, it's speakers, refreshments, marketing materials. For instance, this last Ignite Business Series that took place, it was actually marketed in several different social media arenas. That's Facebook. Also, we had an opportunity to market this event on the radio as well. And so it kind of helped with, it helps with promoting these events, which is a key factor in the disparity study recommendations. One of the recommendations, or one of the items listed there, was that there needs to be more marketing information and education to bring awareness of what's going on in terms of resources within the city. So that all aligns with the disparity recommendations that we received previously. And so that's why the resolution and these events target those areas.
And who's responsible to make that happen?
Who, as far as marketing?
Yeah.
A working concert with the staff to do so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Henley?
Well, I have some questions about the disparity study. You know, we keep talking about this, but we really haven't. Well, I think the disparity study was directed toward achieving certain things that really were a mission of the entire council. And I think it's time we got some kind of updated report on how well we're doing. The report was originally received, according to our letter here, two years ago in January of 2019, and we had the presentation February 5th of 2019. So it's been two years. I'm not sure at that time, I know that we said that it, the logistics of determining how we were doing would be difficult to do an annual report, but I think it's been two years. I think it's kind of time for a report to the city council about whether or not we've made progress, what we're doing. I certainly think that the disparity study intended more than some lecture series. I think it expected some results in the amount of particularly contracts that are awarded to SWAM or minority businesses. What is this disparity? I really think we need an updated report. I don't certainly want us to go out and hire the consultant who did the original study to redo it, but I would think our staff could give us an update on how well we're doing at achieving those things that the disparity study indicated we needed to do. I know we had a report just, was it last week or the week before, about the Hive and how that is going to be operating now? It sounds to me like we've been making some progress. I think we need an updated report. And I don't think that we really intended it to fall on one council member to go out and do all of the presentation. I think this is something that is for us to be doing as staff, and I would like to have an update.
And I would, and I would say, Councilmember Henley, I agree with you. It is time for an update. I did host the disparity forum for February 11th, and we have certainly made considerable amount of strides with the help of our staff. There is one particular element which pertains to the dashboard. And the dashboard tells residents what has been done so far, how many contracts have been allocated, you know, where are we with data, and, you know, how we're doing with expenses and so forth. So that particular dashboard is up and going, and it was, it was an honor to be able to promote that and show that to residents on February 11th, along with the other milestones that the City of Virginia Beach has accomplished since the disparity study recommendations came out.
Well, I think we increased our goal to 12%. What did we achieve last year? You know, and I think that we were looking at various groups, how many to women, how many to each of the various minorities. I just would like to see how well we're doing with what the whole purpose of the work was, and not just to continue talking about it, but to, I think we expected some actions, and I'd like to see how our actions are playing out.
Okay, Mr. Wood, then Mr. Moss.
Thanks, and just following up on some of the comments, and I don't know if you have this information, Ms. Wooton, or if other people do. I was just curious, the number of people that you're reaching through these things, if you have that data?
Sure, I can tell you the last couple of ones that we did. And it's really good because I've been able to focus on not just small business, but also minority-owned businesses, service-disabled veteran businesses. So with the pandemic, it's provided a really phenomenal way to reach out to residents. And we hosted it virtually. And so when we hosted it virtually, it was for service-disabled veterans, which, you know, I promoted amongst everyone here at council to let them know how well it went. But I remember it was 4.2,000 views on our website for the city. So that was the one in November. So the one that particularly took place on Saturday, we captured, this one was not put on Facebook. I wish it was, but because of the location, we weren't able to stream it and host it on Facebook. But this particular one, we had about, excluding the participants, probably about 76 participants on that particular WebEx platform. Typically, with the Ignite Business Series, we generally have anywhere from 80 to 100 participants at our events on any given time, and sometimes more. But what has happened in the pandemic, because of our, you know, unique circumstances, we've had to reach people through social media. And so actually, it's been a blessing because it reaches out to more people.
Okay, Mr. Moss and Mr. Bellucci.
First of all, I do want, not my request, because that is looking, and maybe there is no support for that request, and that would just be nice to be known, but I know I am asking that the question be divided for the reasons that I previously specified, because I think they're materially different. But they're not, so since it's the same subject, I'm not entitled to have it divided. But I do believe there are two material questions there. One is the appropriation for this year. One is provide an explicit policy direction that creates an exemption for this program from our standard carryover process, which I do not believe is appropriate. But if that's not the will of this body, then I'll vote no. But I want to come back now to the more substantive question. Since the budget item is under the, generally speaking, we are not involved in budget execution. I think all of us would nod our head that that's not our. So now we have a political appointee who's in charge of now a discretionary budget line item that the council has created. So does that direction then have to come from us collectively as a body? I think it should have to. Or is she now turning to one person to say this is a legitimate expense? Or is there someone in the city manager's office? Because someone is going to be fiduciarily responsible for the obligation of those funds. And now who does the person who we've given the money to? Like, when she's doing meetings and things of this nature, it's pretty clear she's executing. But here, there's a lot of discretion. So we're making the city clerk responsible for saying, yeah, I think that's what the council wants. It's not under the manager's jurisdiction. So I'm just curious, when we come to those kind of internal control issues, which we have to satisfy, and we can't provide directions as individuals, we can only provide direction as a body, that's known, how is, what is the direction that we're asking the city clerk when she has this pool of discretionary money for which we don't have a specific line item budget that we're appropriating? How are we providing? How are we providing the direction that allows her to execute the will of this body versus the will of any one member, which is not legally possible? So I just have a command and control question, and maybe the city manager can enlighten us, or maybe the city attorney, but I don't think that's an unfair point that I have made.
Uh, Mr. Duhany, any response?
Councilmember Moss, I could just say typically how it works in practice, and then Amanda can fill in from there. You know, I, I think basically, for at least from, since I've been here, how it typically works is, at times, Ms. Wooton will contact me and identify the program that she wants to do. I will take that information and then talk to city staff and discuss ways of putting it together and running it by Ms. Wooton and get a better sense of this in line with what she is thinking about. And then, at times, if things aren't appropriate, I'll say, hey, it's not appropriate to do certain particular things, and you, Ms. Wooton usually acquiesces to what I suggest and desire or recommend. Then I usually take it back to staff and say, hey, these are the parameters to set these things back up. And then I think staff contacts the city clerk to pull the budget line item to make sure that we're doing things in accordance with all different financial regulations. So I wouldn't say that Ms. Wooton is directing staff, it's more me talking to Ms. Wooton and trying to think about the bounds of what the resolution called for and make sure it fits within those parameters.
And that's, that's exactly right, Mr. Duhany. There at no uncertain time have I tried to put on a hat as a budget expert and tried to play the role, you know, of a budget manager. That's not my job. But when this resolution was passed in 2019, the body passed it knowing that funding would be provided for these, this event and for the support of the event. It's not on one specific person, however, but someone has to direct the program, someone has to follow up on, you know, what's going on as it relates to events for the disparity study or for the, the particular Ignite Business Series that focuses on that. You know, that's what we agreed to as a council, and it passed 10 to, 10 to 1. And so, you know, again, whatever I do, it goes to Mr. Duhany, as it did back when Mr. Hanson was here. There is no delineation from that particular process. The process was the same. Information went to the city manager, the city manager disseminated direction as to how things relate. And I don't operate outside of the auspices of the city manager and staff. It's, this is not a one-woman show here. This is something here that has been appropriated and approved by council for the residents of Virginia Beach to address a disparity study, which quite frankly, we still have in our city. And so, we're making strides toward it and moving forward, but we're not there yet. And it's going to take some action, it's going to take some work. Our staff has done a great deal of that work, and they're to be commended. However, this is not a one-woman show, I'm not making up things as I go along, I'm adherent to the policies and procedures that are intact for this particular resolution that we passed as a body.
Okay, Mr. Bellucci, Ms. Wilson.
Can I reclaim the floor?
Uh-huh. Oh, I'm sorry.
I would just like to reclaim the floor.
Oh, sure.
Because people responded to something that I never said. The point I'm making, and we haven't appropriated $2,000 yet, so we're not all their way there yet, that's what we hear tonight, but I do think that because we haven't had granularity doesn't mean we shouldn't. Because we haven't, as a body, exercised oversight over what has been executed, doesn't mean that we shouldn't. Because all 11 of us are accountable for what gets executed, and this is a very unusual, I think it's the only thing where I know where we have this level of engagement on expenditures by a council member. I could be incorrect, I think it's true. But I still want to come back to the point that I made, and I hope people will address, because it is a question on the table, is whether or not to divide the question. I just want to make sure that when we get done, before we vote, I don't know how that has, if I have to make a motion to divide the question, then I'm going to make a motion that we divide the question, and maybe there isn't a second, and if not, then we'll proceed, and I know how I'm going to vote. But I will make, I guess it's a substitute motion, I would assume, or just a motion to divide the question?
Yes, sir, it is an incidental motion that is appropriate when the substantive motion's on the floor. It requires a second, there's no debating it, and it's a, a simple majority vote.
And my question is to divide the question between, we get to the line items, that line items 27 through 30 be one question, and that line items between 32 and 35. 27 through 30 deal with the specific issue at hand, which is the appropriate money for this year, and 32 through 35 deals with policy direction that would exempt this particular program from our normal carryover process that we exercise every year. So one's a policy question, and one's a financial question.
If it's okay, Mr. Moss, can we have the rest of the discussion, and then prior to, we'll do the second?
I turn it off.
Need to know whether you have a second on that first.
Okay, I'll tell you, okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to bifurcate.
I think it's a vote without debate.
That is a vote without debate, because if you pass the motion, then you debate the two separate pieces separately in the vote.
Okay, I see what you mean. So now it's time to call for the question on that, without the discussion. Okay, okay, Madam Clerk.
But I, I would like to have some comments on what Councilmember Moss has said. I don't have a problem with separating those two, makes perfect sense to me, that's not a problem. When I sat down and carefully composed this resolution with staff and staff attorney, you know, all of that information, you know, was, was certainly, well, that item was not considered, that, that was not brought to my attention. So I'm happy to certainly consider the, the motion at that level, that's not a problem. But I would say the 2019 resolution allocated $3,000 to the programs. And I think pretty much that's, that's all I want to, want to make sure that I clarify regarding that matter.
Yeah, Mr. Wood.
Ms., I, I didn't have the sheet open. Can you, can you tell me what you're dividing again, Mr. Moss?
For point of clarity, Mr. Moss.
Just, just give me a moment to get to the page. It's 27 to 30.
27 to 30, and 32 through 35 are two separate questions.
Okay.
Correct, thank you, Mr. Tower.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just have a, ask a point of clarification of Councilmember Wooton. I just want to make sure, because I'm supportive of your resolution, and I'd like to have the chance to speak in support of it if we ever can get to that. But before, before we do, I just want to make sure that I understand from your comments that you're comfortable with dividing the question as Councilmember Moss has proposed.
Sure, that's, that's not a problem.
Great. You know what, at, at this point, if it's okay, we'll call for the question. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Bellucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse is absent. Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Ten to zero to separate the questions.
Okay, the, your questions will be separated. Now, at this point, should we have discussion just on the first item about the actual expenditure? You know, and I will say that, you know, I would be in favor of that, but, but once again, you know, let's talk, you know, let's go ahead and talk it through.
Sure, sure, and I, there's one thing I just want to clarify, I'm sorry, I know Councilmember Wilson wants to say something. Just want to clarify, when Ignite Events go forward, I do and have reached out to council members, and I have said, what do you think about having an Ignite Business Series on service-disabled veterans? I have done that, and some people have responded, and they say, well, you know, I don't really have any, you know, comment on that, you know, yes or no. But I do reach out to council members, those who respond, and ask what your thoughts are on the different series that I focus on. But I would like to say, one of the things that delineates this particular program from what we have in a city is, it really is not only based on a disparity study, but also on the needs of the residents and the business owners. When you're constantly out there talking to business owners and they're asking for business series, resources, information and knowledge on nonprofits, or microbusinesses, or federal contracts, or city contracts, so they're asking for certain things. And so, what I'm doing is supporting what they're asking for. It's not a, it's, it's not a rogue agenda or anything of that nature. It is addressing what residents, business owners, and citizens ask for. So that is a huge difference in what we, we do as it relates to the city, so.
Thank you, Ms. Wooton. Mr. Bellucci, Ms. Wilson, and then Mr. Tower.
Thank you. Well, after a lengthy conversation, I'd like to offer a few words of support for the resolution that Councilmember Wooton put before us today, principally because this is effectively the same resolution that we supported, I guess in 2019, although it seems much more recently than that, in order to provide with, with, what is within the scope of the amount of events that are produced by Councilmember Wooton and the team of city staff who support her, a relatively modest budget. I have some professional and, and experience in my professional life and also in my volunteer and civic life in producing events that are somewhat similar in nature to the events that Councilmember Wooton is producing. And frankly, the budget that's being requested is, is a relatively modest budget, and, and obviously, I think, creates efficiencies in the, in the financing structure, particularly when one considers the importance of the topics that are being covered. So that's one point. The next point is that the Ignite Series, I had the, the pleasure actually of having a chance to join the most recent series, which focused on nonprofits in our community, and it was very well-attended, and there were a wide cross-section of, of subject matter experts and stakeholders from across our community who participated, and I think the program itself delivered a substantial value to those who participated. And when one considers the fact that Councilmember Wooton has chosen to focus this series on some of the most substantial issues that we face as a city, in fact, some of the city council priorities that we've stated, including the disparity study, including supporting small businesses. I've been on record as having stated some concerns about the particular style of the production and how they're promoted, particularly around election season, and we've had those discussions, but I think that in the context of where we sit today, the programs are well-executed, and they may be slightly different than if I were executing, if I were creating them myself. And I think that's, I think that's okay, because I don't think that the Ignite Series or the forums on the disparity study are the only thing the city is doing to address these issues. And I think that was well-pointed out by Councilmember Henley. I think it's part of the portfolio of initiatives that the city is advancing in order to, in order to achieve those, the goals that we've stated, our goals of this body. And so, I think as we discuss disparity, I can't help but note the disparity in the level of scrutiny that this particular request, which is extremely modest relative to the other, to the, even our own agenda items tonight, the level of scrutiny that this request is receiving relative to the, the items on our agenda tonight, or the items that we contend with on a regular basis. So, you know, I think what we have here is a council member who has taken initiative, and while it may be slightly different than the initiative that we would particularly take, our colleague has taken initiative to, to raise awareness and provide resources on the topics that we've declared are priorities to us, and I think we should take this opportunity to support her in those initiatives rather than create obstacles. So I'm, I'm proud to support the request this evening.
Okay, Ms. Wilson.
So over the years, one of the biggest complaints that I hear from citizens is, well, we didn't know about this, we didn't know about that, how do, and how do we get information out to people? And it's always been a struggle. We had a magazine at one time, you know, we've got Facebook, and we have all different ways to try to get information out to people. And it's, it's been a very, very hard thing to do, and, and especially, I know that the Minority Business Council has had their expo every year and tried to get out a lot of information with that. So we also know that, especially in marketing and sales, it's always repeat, repeat, repeat for people to, to really understand and to, for it to sink in and to, to get with them. And I know that a lot of these small businesses, they're so busy running their business and trying to make a living and trying to make a life, it's just really hard to focus on and go digging to find out what information is there. So I think that this is a really good thing that you're doing, Councilmember Wooton. The only problem that I see is, I would really prefer, we have so many wonderful facilities across the city that we don't have to pay rent to, to utilize. I'd really prefer us to be able to use our own, you know, facilities that we're not having to pay rent for and save some money that way. But I, I think what you're doing is, is grand, and I think it's helpful, and I like Mrs. Henley's idea that we really need to get an update on where we are. Is there any consideration that you might just utilize our own buildings that would not require rent?
As I stated previously, Councilmember Wilson, Wilson, and as been stated in 2019, I'm, I'm, I'm really not, I, I hear what you're saying, but it's, it's, it's something that I've addressed many times before. It's, it's not something that I have discarded. I've heard the request before, and I am, have been compliant with that request. The ATC Center is a building that the city owns. I've had events there, and will have, continue to have the events there. Again, it is making sure that the events are distributed throughout the city of Virginia Beach, where residents will go. I don't, I'm sure you all know, particularly when we have community forums and meetings, everybody won't go to a certain location. Everybody's not going to come to the convention center, but some might come to maybe the center of Town Center, maybe at the Sandler Center. Some people might go to the ATC Center. So what I try to do is be equitable in the distribution of the events and having them throughout the city. But certainly, I always want to make sure that I'm being frugal with the resources that are allocated to, to me, and I think I have done that with a $3,000 budget, with four events that accommodate, you know, a, a, a good amount of attendance and participants that take place annually. So absolutely, I have done that, and will continue to consider that.
Okay, Mr. Tower. So that we don't extend this any longer than need, I just want to identify myself with the usual silver-tongued remarks of my friend to my, my right here, Mr. Bellucci's comments, I would identify myself with those. I commend Councilwoman Wooton for her good work. We know how hard it is to get people to do things that don't, are over and above their normal lives and jobs, to do volunteer work for the city, and we're pretty good at doing that. And I think, I can understand, as Mike said, some sensitivities if you're doing something in the midst of a campaign, but on the whole, this has been, I think, a very needed, we, service to our city. I, I'm not aware of that Ms. Wooton has made unreasonable demands on staff in getting it executed, and certainly, the budget is laughably small. So I, I commend her for doing it, I support it, and I am happy to, happy to vote for it. I'm equally happy to... I'm equally happy to defer to my friend, Mr. Moss, is on the division. But that's another subject. I assume we're going to vote on this first.
We'll vote on that separately, Guy. Okay, anybody else at this point? Okay, we have a question on the floor. We bifurcated the vote, and we are just voting on the front part of, you know, which would involve the appropriation of the $2,325 and as stipulated, you know, by the bifurcation as suggested by Mr. Moss. Okay, so we will vote on that part. We'll call it Part A.
Okay, for Part A, so we have Councilmember Wooton that made the original motion and seconded by Councilmember Belucci for Part A. Is that right, Mark? Okay, just making sure.
Okay.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Belucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse is absent. Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood? Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the first part of this ordinance regarding lines 27 through 30. Let's do it that way.
Okay, now we will open for discussion, you know, Part B of this. And, you know, Mr. Moss?
I have, in respect to people's time, I have nothing new to add that I haven't already spoken, Mr. Mayor, but thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, any other questions or concerns? Okay, we will now vote on Part B.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I ask? Yes, I just want to clarify, Part B is, could you clarify that part again?
Okay, Mr. Moss, would you be so gracious to, I think it was line 33?
With relative to the last ones. A vote "aye" would mean that we're going to provide the direction for the city manager to make the Ignite Series an exception to our carryover process, and the city manager would be directed to carry it over. And the no vote would mean that he wouldn't receive that direction, and the Ignite program would be subject to the same terms and conditions as any other program in the city with regards to unexpended balances at the end of the year. I think that's fair explanation. But thank you for the asking. I appreciate that, Ms. Wooton.
Any comment, Ms. Wooton? Okay, all right, any other comments? Okay, Ms. Henley, I'm just checking down at the end here, okay?
I was just, I'm just puzzled because I'm concerned about taking a step of, at this point, telling the city manager, directing him to put, what to put in the budget and to use a different policy. I'm just confused.
Well, that's why I had to divide it. Because if you want to provide the direction, you vote yes. If you don't want to provide the direction, you vote no. And that's as clean as I could make it. I didn't want to make a negative motion. I just wanted to make the motion as it's stated and let people vote their own issue. And I think that's the best way. So if you don't like it, I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that's, a no vote means we're not going to provide the direction.
So was there a motion actually put on the table?
Yes.
I believe the original motion by Ms. Wooton and the second by Mr. Belucci applies to both portions of the divided question.
Which is why I didn't restate it in a negative.
Okay, so we'll be voting on this second part now. Okay. Okay, at this point, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Abbott?
Nay.
Councilmember Belucci?
So I want to make sure that, okay, nay.
Councilmember Henley?
Nay.
Councilmember Jones?
Nay.
Councilmember Moss?
Nay.
Councilmember Rouse is absent. Councilmember Tower?
Nay.
Councilmember Wilson?
Nay.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Nay.
Mayor Dyer?
Nay.
By a vote of 1 to 10?
To 9.
9 to 1, I'm sorry. It's, so there is no direction for the city manager to include that in the budget for next year.
Okay, thank you. But once again, you know, Councilmember Wooton, I've attended the last few of your seminars with the veterans and the last one. It's a valuable series. But, you know, let's make sure in the future, going forward, we find the path, you know, for success.
And now I'd like to have some ending comments. You know, when I first brought this resolution and consulted with staff, there was a comment that was made where they said, oh, you know, your colleagues who've been on staff or who've been on council for a while, they'll get it. They'll know what you're trying to do. Well, I tell you, just by sitting here tonight, and I appreciate the comments, the supportive comments for the program, really do appreciate that. But it just seems odd and strange that we are sitting here going over a resolution that we passed in 2019 to support the disparity study, the Ignite Business Series, that we knew was beneficial to the citizens. But yet, we took the time to really say things, go over things that had already been addressed before in 2019, as if we were not aware of what we did. And I just find that really puzzling, is frustrating. You know, because when you're on council, you're elected to be supportive and to make things a priority for the people, for the citizens. But it's unfortunate, sometimes you just don't get the support that you need or it's difficult. It becomes really difficult. And you have to ask yourself, what, am I really, really, truly supporting the citizens? Am I here, sitting here, trying to do this for my own specific gain? Of course not. I was elected to support the citizens and the residents and the business owners. You know, and I take pride in going out, talking to them, and keeping informed of what they're asking for. And I just think it's just quite, quite disconcerting to see what we expense time doing tonight. It doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And, okay, at this point, we will move on to Ordinances and Resolutions Number 6, and that is to extend the sunset date to April 5, 2022, rate residential permit parking in the historic Cavalier Shores neighborhood.
Barbara Messner?
Yes, ma'am. Hard to hear. It's like a wind tunnel of cold air blowing in your ears out there. These fans are outrageous. Okay. I've been on parking issues in the city for decades, long before some of you were even on council. There is no parking. It's a joke. And to have restricted parking in certain neighborhoods for the Cavalier area because of the Cavalier Hotels, three hotels, 42 million plus that we've subsidized. So I'm opposed in helping some people with parking when the rest of the city's parking issues are not addressed. And I have to take issue with all this time on Ignite Series. I'm well aware of who did the march, the disparity. The disparity wasn't for disabled American veterans. We have the DAV. It wasn't for veterans. We have the federal military that takes care of them. You're just adding it in to make it more palatable. Have town halls for everyone in the city. Mr. Tower, who is supposedly my rep, district rep. We don't need district reps. It doesn't matter, you know, y'all don't answer. How many of y'all read my emails? I correspond all the time. You know, there's been bid rigging and select people. It has nothing to do with color. It's all in who pays the salaries. And, you know, I don't appreciate not being able to have a seat in here and all this on-off counting with the COVID. Like I said, the parking issues are ridiculous and the spending for something like that and to take this much time is outrageous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, there were two speakers signed up via WebEx, but I do not see either of them listed or online. So I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Okay, at this point, why don't we have a motion in a second, then we'll go into discussion. Do we have a motion? Mr. Moss?
Mr. Mayor, I move that this item be deferred to the April 6 meeting and in the interim, that the city manager provide us the information as to the current status of construction. It goes back to why we created this particular exception. To start with, this policy was because of the impact of the construction of the Cavalier on the neighborhood. And he can update us on that construction, update us on the problem, and put the facts before. So I move for a deferral to April the 6th.
Motion to defer till April 6?
Second.
Do we have a second? Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion at this point? Okay, the vote is open, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Belucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to 0, this resolution has been deferred to April the 6, 2021.
Okay, at this point, we will go to Planning Item. And Plotting Item Number 1, Quan Lee for Conditional Use Permit, Raise Short-Term Rental at 1612 Tollwood Manor Court, District 1, Centerville.
The applicant is participating via WebEx. Quan Lee, if you would please pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you have any questions on my applications?
Are there any questions for the applicant? There do not seem to be any questions.
Are you still hearing me okay?
Yes, sir, we can hear you. Please proceed with your presentation.
I just want to make a quick comment. If there's no questions, I have consulted with the neighbors, and there was 10, there are 10 residents, including my properties. And we had a chance to talk to six homeowners in the area, and they are supportive of the short-term rental that we want to do. So we haven't had any objections. We tried to talk to the other people as well, but we couldn't get a hold of them. So that's all I have to say. So if you have any other questions or comments, please let me know.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any other speakers?
Barbara Messner?
You can't see them. Are they the only pictures for the property?
That is correct.
Okay. Yes, I've been speaking on these for quite a while. There's, I assume that's it, right in front? It looks like a nice neighborhood. I don't know how, I don't know why Ms. Henley and some of these other people didn't bring up objections to how many short-term rentals we have in the area and the fact that we don't have enough police on the force. No one wants to work here. I didn't get here in time to hear, you know, the pledge and everything from the other room. But there are a lot of police officers dying. Public safety should be number one, not tourism, not events year-round, not short-term rentals in every neighborhood destroying your neighborhoods. I don't care how nice some of these people may or may not be, but these are investments for most of them. And until the pandemic and the mask and everything is lifted, there should not be any on the agenda. I oppose. And it's really hard to be prepared when you can't even sit in here. One image that I've shown you before. We have too much high-density properties, condos, apartments. There's no, I mean, we've had problems with fires over on Shore Drive. When you have a fire in, you know, you have a gated community, it's hard for the firemen to get here. This is one of the complexes that was totally burned, and there's been deaths from fires. Public safety and being able to have enough first responders to respond and to have public health department. I mean, you're a year behind on doing anything about the pandemic, but you've never, ever closed the beaches or the hotels. And one of the FOIA's, I ask, you know, trying to find out how many hotels have been rented lately, the commissioner, who's responsible, according to Mr. Tahan, for having all of the, because you're charging these people like a mini hotel. So we should have those stats. So I'm very much opposed to the short-term rentals, and I find it really strange, after all the conversations we've had for the past year or two years, that none of you had any questions.
Thank you very much.
That's all the speakers. Mayor, would you like for me to ask the applicant if he had any rebuttal?
Yes, that would be great.
Quan Lee, if you have any rebuttal, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, the Planning Committee, to review my applications. And I believe that we met all of the requirements for the short-term rentals, and we have the approval from majority of the residents in that neighborhood to approve our short-term rental. And I hope that the City Council will approve my application. Thank you, that's all I have.
Ms. Wooton, you have a recommendation on this?
So I did go out to the location and I looked at the area of the short-term rental. And, you know, I have to say, it's, I'm a little bit, just, it's kind of, for me, difficult, this application a bit. Because, as was mentioned, planning approved it 10 to 0. There's adequate parking. You know, there's enough parking spaces for six vehicles. I went out, I looked at it. However, you know, my mind goes to if there is an event overnight, and you can have at least 12 people, you know, in the home, I believe, is what it is. And I started thinking about if there are an event. Is there enough parking, you know, in the cul-de-sac? Because it's a very, it's a very small cul-de-sac with 10 houses. There aren't any short-term rentals in that area. However, the resident has followed all of the guidelines that have been asked by City Council to provide a short-term rental in our city. So what I would do is I'm going to move for approval of the short-term So what I would do is I'm going to move for approval of the short-term rental based on, you know, the applicant doing everything that they were supposed to do. I do have a bit of hesitation because of the place that it's located in. But I don't want to negatively impact the resident for following all the guidelines that have been set before us.
Okay, a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion to approve in a second. Any discussion at this point? Okay, Madam Clerk, if we can call for the vote.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
No.
Councilmember Henley?
No.
Councilmember Jones?
No.
Councilmember Moss?
Nay.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
No.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
No.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 4 to 6, this application has been denied. The motion was to approve, so it was 4 to 6.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point, we're moving on to Planning Item Number 2, Jonathan West for a conditional use permit at short-term rental at 4814 Lake Drive, District 4, Bayside. Where's Bayside? Okay. Gladly, Mr. Jones.
Mayor, would you like for me to call the speakers?
That would be great.
Jonathan West is the applicant. And I'm going to go ahead and call 3 additional speakers. Sarah Houck, Barbara Messner. And then we'll have 1 speaker on WebEx after the in-person speakers.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening, council members. How y'all doing? Everybody good? All right. So a little about me. I'm a lifelong Virginia resident. I was born in Yorktown, Virginia. I like to fish. I was able to finally save up for a place down here. And it's in Chesapeake Beach. I really love the area. Since I got it, I've made a lot of improvements to it. I got a folder here. It's like $28,000 worth of improvements, which isn't a lot, but it's some stuff that was done. I submitted the parking plan. There's plenty of parking. No one's going to be parking on the street. I selected the location because I have an extended family and a lot of friends. And I wanted to just offset some of the costs by having maybe, you know, 2 to 3 rentals a month, you know, nothing crazy. I don't want, you know, a lot of noise. I want to vet all the applicants, you know, to make sure that they're good, you know, good ratings on Airbnb. And, you know, the big thing, I think, is communities, you know, you want them improved. I like investing in property. And I like making it better. And that's good for the community, because if the houses are improved, it's good for everybody. That little area's got some nice little restaurants. And, you know, restaurants have been hit hard by the pandemic. And it'd be good to get some, you know, fresh faces down there so they could support that local restaurant scene. But again, I want to stress that the parking's, you know, I got plenty of spots for parking. Really big on vetting the applicants. I don't want any trash, you know, left. I'm going to have like, you know, nice contained trash containers. Trying to think what else. You know, the neighborhood's just really quaint. I could see how, you know, people wouldn't want it to be disturbed. You know, you can appreciate Barbara. She's coming in here, she's really zealous, you know. But, you know, in the opening comments, I think it was Jones, somebody said a prayer about, you know, he wants what's best for the city. So, I mean, it's like, is it part of the city? Is it, you know, what is it? You know, because you got short-term rentals in other places that they're just everywhere. And, you know, if you follow the process, you do what you're supposed to do. I don't understand why it would be a problem. So that's all I got for right now.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Oh, Ms. Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming today.
Yeah, no problem.
I have, I have a couple of questions for staff, but I have a couple of questions that I can address with you. Have you rented your property since starting the application process?
There's a naval officer that lives upstairs.
But not a short-term rental?
No, ma'am. None have been done.
And I understand in your application that you own both units?
Yes, ma'am.
What is the plan for the second unit?
The second unit is just a long-term rental.
So you planned to rent it long-term to someone?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And do you live in the area?
In the downstairs.
Oh, you live in the home right now?
Yes, ma'am. Yep. And I travel a lot for work. So when I was out of town, you know, I was going to have some family members come and stuff like that.
So you live in, so it's a duplex?
Yes, ma'am.
And you have a renter upstairs on one unit and you live in the second unit? And then you have a second space that is going to be a long-term renter?
It's just 2 units.
Right, but you're living in the building?
14 in the bottom. Yeah.
Okay, that's all the questions I have for you.
It's all good.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much.
The next speaker is Sarah Houck. And after Ms. Houck will be Barbara Messner.
Good evening. Mayor Dyer and council members. My name is Sarah Houck and I am the STR representative from the Chesapeake Beach Civic League. My purpose tonight is to state the Civic League's opposition to the STR request on 4814 Lake Drive. Before I begin to explain our opposition to this case, I think you should hear about an incident this past weekend that involved another STR on Ocean View Avenue. This is right down from Buoy 44. The renters of the STR had a party Saturday night and that became a large party that lasted into Sunday morning that ended into a shootout at 5:40 in the morning. Thank goodness no one was injured, but bullets landed in nearby neighbors' cars. This was frightening and shocking. And this is one of the main reasons why the Civic League is opposed to STRs. You never know who the renters will be. If this happened on Lake Drive, it would have been much worse. The road is one of the smallest roads in Chesapeake Beach. Bullets would have entered the homes instead of cars. The Civic League does not believe their request for a STR at 4814 Lake Drive is a good fit. The road is small, but heavily used by residents to reach their homes west of Pleasure House Road. Many residents walk this street to it to attend events at Commonwealth Brewery. The road is most likely full of puddles, even in dry spells. It floods often when we have the slightest amount of rain. And the pictures are from me that were just passed around. Parking is inadequate. If you see the pictures there with the truck in the driveway, they're short driveways. And if you have a big truck come, you're not going to have anything but a tiny little car with it. Most people don't have little cars when they come vacationing. On the left-hand side, there's a SUV there. And unless you're really squeezed in, you're going to be on the grass and everything. It's just not a good situation. Let's see. When this item was presented to Planning, there were 3 letters opposing this and I'm hoping you all received those. I was not one of them. There's a rumor going around that Mr. West does not reside at Lake Drive. So I'm happy that he explained that. But that he plans to rent both sides. So I'd really like to have that cleared up tonight. Presently, there are no STRs on the west side of Pleasure House Road. We certainly do not want to start a precedent. We respectfully request that you deny this request and consider what happened on Ocean View Avenue in all future STR applications. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Barbara Messner? And then the next speaker will be via WebEx.
I don't know if y'all listened when I first spoke, after I trudged back and forth, but it's discrimination during a pandemic to allow developers and applicants to wait inside for their second turn and for me to stand in the doorway with the wind tunnel. I'm opposed for so many reasons. Public safety is the number-one reason. Most of this is just people making money. It's investments. We need to save what's left of families. Our kids can't even go to school. And there's no reason why you should have transient people. Anyway, 3-1-1. At one time, you combined it with 9-1-1. And that didn't work out too well. We have major, major crime, crashes, shootings, everything. And now COVID. COVID, that should have been the National Guard for the people that want it. But now 3-1-1 takes those calls too. And 3-1-1 is supposed to take the calls for short-term rentals? Like I said, there should be no short-term rentals approved until the mask mandate and crime is resolved and we have a fully-staffed police. Fully-staffed is like 850. That doesn't apply today with 15 million tourists per year. We take care of the tourists. They go to our hospitals. They go to our restaurants. So as I've stated, no one is available to go check these places out. This is in Bayside. I assume Mr. Jones is gone. But I'm opposed to all of them at this time. Thank you.
The next speaker is via WebEx, Amanda Edwards. Ms. Edwards, if you would pause 2 to 3 seconds before beginning your comments. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Amanda Edwards and I am a homeowner on Zibo Court, which I'm at 4812, which is the property that is directly behind Mr. West's property. And I did write a letter to each of you. I know it was a little late yesterday, so I'm not sure if y'all got it. But just due to my nervousness a little bit and the time, I'm just going to go ahead and read that. "Our small cul-de-sac on the backside of this property has only 8 homes, which house 12 children. 5 of those children are under the age of 6. And I personally have a 1 and a 3-year-old and we have another on the way. Additionally, there are several children on adjacent streets that regularly play with their friends from Zibo Court. And I am concerned that allowing for a short-term rental would increase parked cars and traffic on our really small cul-de-sac, endangering our children who are always out riding bikes, scooters, playing basketball, playing with their toys, drawing with chalk. And I just think that unfamiliar drivers to the street are not conditioned to watch for these small kids. Our driveways are very short. So even if they are in the driveway, as you guys know, rolling balls, they go out into the street, the kids run. And if there's a car coming, it's a short street. They're not going to see these kids run out to get their toys. And the primary reason I believe the traffic will increase on our street is the short-term rental does not provide ample parking. I know that was brought up in some previous comments. And you can see in some of the pictures, the driveways on Lake are also very short. The road is very narrow, very short. It's one of only 3 accesses into our neighborhood. And I think that, you know, if they can't park in the front of the building, they're going to come around and they're going to park right behind it, which is right in front of my house. Secondly, there's a really large fenced-in yard in the back of that property. My concern that it invites for large groups to gather, party while they're vacationing in this family-oriented residential neighborhood. This past summer, the owner of the property cut down all of the trees that were inside this fence line and it just completely opened up the space without any privacy. So my concern is the noise we're going to hear from these groups. He mentioned to us, we talked to him personally last summer, he mentioned that he lives in Richmond. And as he said earlier, one of the units will be reserved for long-term, the other for short-term. He also made the comment that it was only going to be for weekends, which I'm hesitant to believe that. But even if that were the case, I think that just invites for younger people, not families, that will be coming and that's just going to create parties. There is a brewery across the street. That's a selling point. My bedroom window faces the backyard of this property and I am greatly concerned with the disruption that noise is going to cause to our neighborhood. And lastly, our neighborhood is already inundated with traffic during the summer months. Local beachgoers line our streets to go to the bay. I understand this. We have 3 public beach accesses in our neighborhood. But during these months, we endure increased trash, drunk drivers, excessive traffic. And our private property is just lined with cars all.
Thank you.
Mr. West, if you would like to come back for a 3-minute rebuttal. Thank you.
I mean, everybody's talking what if. The one lady was just talking, she lives on the street behind the house. I can understand her kids are playing, but she's 1 street over. The first lady was talking about a shooting at a house. I mean, you could have a shooting at a house, a rental. You can have a shooting anywhere. So, I mean, that's not good. But shootings have nothing to do with short-term rentals. I'm not going to let people party at the house. I want to do like 1 to 2 rentals, 1 to 2, maybe 3 rentals a month. So that's all I have.
Okay, any other questions? Ms. Abbott?
I'm sorry, I don't mean to ask this question of you again, but I just want to understand, you live in the house, right?
Yeah, the downstairs.
So under our current ordinance, if you live there, you don't need a permit to do home sharing?
Okay.
So...
So I don't even need to do any of this?
Well, you don't, if you're home sharing, you don't. But if you don't live in Virginia Beach in that specific unit, then...
No, in that one? Yeah, okay.
So that's what I'm trying to understand, because it's been brought up that you have, that you don't live in Virginia Beach.
I mean, I got a couple of houses, but I primarily stay in this one, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moss?
Are you registered to vote at this address?
Am I registered to vote? I don't vote.
So when you say you have several homes, I'm just trying to get, but you're not going to be renting the home when you're staying in it, is that correct?
I mean, when I go out of town, I might let somebody, you know, like a family member, I might rent it to somebody on like the Airbnb network.
But to answer Ms. Abbott's question is, home share is when you are actually in the house, staying there and someone stays with you. You are going to be vacating the house when you rent it, correct?
I mean, I can or I could stay. I mean, that's up to y'all.
Well, no, it's really up to you what you tell us, how you plan using the property. That's important. Which property do you claim is your legal domicile for the purposes of taxation with the IRS?
4814.
So that is your address of record? Okay, that's what I was trying to get at, where you, where your domicile was versus number of properties. But you aren't going to be in the house when you rent it?
I mean, whatever the rules are, I don't know what, I thought it was, I'm just trying to follow the rules with this, so I don't...
Well, the rules you applied under is to rent the home when you're not in it. That's what you've applied for.
So I can rent it, I can rent it when I am there?
If you are staying in the home and renting it, like if I was renting a room in my house and someone came and stayed, that's home share. You don't need to be here. If I'm not living in my house and I'm renting it when I'm not there, that's a short-term rental if you're renting it for less than 30 days. Your request is to rent the property when you are not there for periods less than 30 days. That's what you've asked.
Well, I guess I'd like to get both.
Okay, understand. Very good.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought the lady who lives on Lake Drive did the best job of describing the problem that I see with granting this permit. This is a narrow street. The budding street is narrow. It's a residential neighborhood, a lot of children. This is not a place for a commercial enterprise. The gentleman in his comments has led me to believe, frankly, that it's gonna end up with both of these units being used for short-term rentals. And I just can't support it. It's, it's not in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood, and so I'm gonna move to deny it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, we're open.
Councilmember, and the motion is to deny. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Lucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to 0, this application has been denied.
Okay. Moving on to item number three. Adam Nicole for a conditional use permit, raise short-term rental at 113-55 Street, 55th Street, Unit A in Lynn Haven.
The applicant is participating via WebEx, Gus Nicole. If you would pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments, thank you.
Hi, good evening, City Council. My name is Gus Nicole. I'm the owner of 113A, 55th Street. I've been a resident of Virginia Beach for 30 years. I'm a retired naval officer. I raised my family here, so I have a vested interest in ensuring that we maintain the same neighborhood in which I raised my family for others. I've applied for the short-term rental application. This is my primary home, it's my only home. I live here full-time, I travel occasionally for work, and my intent is, is to have the ability to vary occasionally when I'm out of town for work, to be able to rent, rent the house for short-term. I've spoken to all of my neighbors, I've engaged them in this dialogue. As recently as this weekend, checked with my next-door neighbor to ensure all of my neighbors are fully supportive of, of this. There are not many short-term rentals in this particular part of the North End where I live, but that is my intent. I intend to fully occupy the home full-time going forward and just wish to have the opportunity on occasion to rent it out. I have plenty of off-street parking, I have a long driveway and a concrete pad, which you can see on that picture that's being shown now, that will hold an additional two cars. So, I'm happy to take any questions from the, the council or any speakers.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, Mr. Wood.
I don't know, Ms. Abbott had a question, I don't know if it was for the applicant or for staff. Okay.
Okay.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner.
As stated, we need to have a moratorium on short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. We have hotels. If people don't wanna rent in the hotels, we need to ask why they don't wanna stay in a hotel. But, you know, I, this is the North End. Everything started at the North End with Atkinson Realty. It's been almost impossible to find affordable rental because they started the summer-winter, which was three months. That wasn't bad when it was three months. But, you don't have anybody that's gonna go check on these people and for the, for the residents, if, if there is any problem, they have to, they're supposed to call 3-1-1. That, that, that doesn't make sense to call 3-1-1 if you have a problem. It depends on what the problem is. But if it's a serious problem, they should be allowed to call 9-1-1. And, you know, like I said, it's lots of people retired and, you know, it doesn't matter who you are, I just, I think it's ridiculous to keep considering these and keep adding them. So, I'm, I'm opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Nicole, if you would like to respond or rebuttal, you have three minutes.
Thank you, I appreciate those comments, and I, I don't agree with them. I think these, these opportunities provide opportunities for others to have a different experience, and, and so I, I thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to take any questions from the council.
Questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much, sir. At this point, Mr. Wood.
I'd like to wait before I make a motion to hear what Ms. Abbott has to say.
Thank you, I just had a question for staff. Is, is Bobby on the line? Okay. I had sent an email to Mr. Tahan last night with a lot of questions, not about the specific application, but with some of the ones that we're coming up to. And one of the questions I had was about, we received a letter in opposition to this application about the sign placement, and I wanted to know, the staff report said that, that when they went to visit, they saw the sign was fine, but the email that I got referenced a more recent issue, so I wanted to know if the sign had been placed in, in the appropriate fashion and when the last time it had been checked up on, and, and that there had been adequate notice for the neighborhood to provide feedback if they wanted to.
Mr. Tahan, if you would pause two to three seconds, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Abbott, the, our staff checked the sign, we also received the same concern, I believe, previously at the Planning Commission public hearing. We did go and double-check once again the sign. There was a, there is a photo taken that was done on February 18th, which was the last time staff was out at the location, and we did note that the sign does meet the posting requirements. I believe what may have happened is that there was a vehicle parked in front of it on that driveway in, in some fashion, but when we visited the site, the sign was visible from the right of way.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I've looked at the property and, and this application. This is an area with traditional STRs. It is also an area that's part of the overlay discussion, and unique to the North End, this, this particular applicant has a significant amount of off-street parking. So, with all that in mind, I'd move approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, any other discussion? Okay, if we can move forward.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Lucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
No.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Nay.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 8 to 2, this application has been approved.
Okay, moving on to item number four. Karen and Joe Allen, Old Hickory Investments LLC, for a conditional use permit, raise short-term rental at 1361 Goose Landing, District 6, 6th Beach.
The applicant, Karen Allen, is participating via WebEx. Ms. Allen, if you would pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments, thank you. Go ahead and begin your comments, you are unmuted, thank you. We have one additional speaker.
Okay, go ahead and move forward.
Barbara Messner.
I'm surprised that it's only 8 to 2. There were other people who said that they weren't gonna be voting for all these short-term rentals since we don't have, have enough people to inspect them. And the comments about the signage, whether the signage was there or not, has been brought up many, many times. A lot of the signs are way back, I've held up pictures. And a lot of the questions seem to be helping. The, the duty of planning is to help people with their applications, they're hired to help people. This is the Beach District, and I thought Mr. Tower at one time said, you know, we wanna start restoring the neighborhoods and cutting down, you know, having a limit. Like I said, there's too many of them, it's ongoing, and I think it needs, it needs to stop, but as I've said before, everyone who votes for these, knowing we don't have enough police, police don't wanna work here, and you're considering hiring 18-year-olds to help the sheriffs, I think you need to think about who's liable for approving all of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll try to go back to the applicant. So, let's try Kelly-Joe David and see if that's... So, she's actually dropped off, she's no longer a part of the WebEx. She must have been having problems.
Okay, at this point, let's go ahead and move forward, Mr. Tower.
I'm very reluctant to move forward without the applicants here and being...
I'm sorry, she has rejoined WebEx. If you would like for me to try to recognize her again?
If you would, ma'am clerk.
Ms. Allen, if you would pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments, thank you.
Hello? Hello, can you...
We can hear you, please proceed.
Okay, this is Joe Allen, I'm the husband of Karen Allen, we own the property together. Yeah, we are, you know, we talk to the neighbors, no one's opposing us. We are looking, we have a rental property management company in place to assist us in doing this properly. We're renting 30 or older only, you know, no parties. We're vetting the people, you know, we're doing everything, you know, it's a two-bedroom townhouse, so it's not, you know, limited, it's only to four people, so two couples or two adults and two kids. And it's got off-street parking. It's very, you know, about a mile to the beach by bicycle or, you know, driving. There's the new trails and dog parks that the city has made over there in Chatalong, which makes it very friendly for families to walk and ride bikes to the beach. Yeah, just very, you know, we're, we're making it very family-oriented and not, you know, it's not gonna be like a, a party house and nothing like that, you know, we have a minimum five-day rental, a five-day night, five-night minimum, so it's not looking for when you just come to get it for the weekend or anything like that, we're local. So, we're about 10 minutes from that location, we've had this house for about 20 years, and this is our first time doing short-term rental, but we just wanna do it right and respect the city and, you know, make it a, a family rental, not a party rental. And I know Virginia Beach, you have the new district down there with the growing, the bike pass and stuff like that, so I think it'd be a good thing with, you know, as events grow in the city, there's a need for more housing, or at least hotels, or, you know, places, a combination for people. And, you know, with COVID and even, you know, I know myself, we travel a lot with my family, we like to stay in houses, not hotels, because you have the full kitchen, you know, you have the kids that you can cook dinner for and things like that, and it's very nice, so... Yeah, that's, that's all, you know, like I said, we are using Evolve, which is a property management company, which is, has years and years of experience of handling and vetting, you know, short-term rentals. So, we're, we have the guidance and experience of, of all of their expertise. That's all.
And at this point. Okay.
Mayor, if you could turn your microphone on, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Tower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no opposition that I'm aware of to this application. It appears to me that the, this is an area that could tolerate additional short-term rentals without a great deal of issues to the neighbors or otherwise, and I'm gonna move it's approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Madam Clerk?
The motion is to approve. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Lucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
No.
Councilmember Jones?
Nay.
Councilmember Moss?
Nay.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
No.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
No.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Hold on, one, two, three, five. That's five to five, so the motion's denied.
Sorry, what was the count?
The count was five to five, the motion has been denied.
Thank you.
Motion's denied.
Okay, we will now move on to item number five. Bow Low for conditional use permit, raise short-term rental at 619-25th Street, District 6, Beach.
The applicant's representative is participating via WebEx. Ethan Byers, Mr. Byers, if you would pause two to three seconds before beginning, thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor Dyer. My name is Ethan Byers, I represent Mr. Bowlow. Mr. Low's family live in Northern Virginia, they've visited Virginia Beach for many years, both as a vacation and also to visit their family that lives in the area. And throughout those years, they, they became to love Virginia Beach, and so they wanted to look for a house here that they could eventually retire to. They found that house and desire, in the meantime, to rent that house as a short-term rental to help cover some of the costs. There, during the Planning Commission meeting, there were several reservations about granting this short-term rental application. The largest being that there's this proposed ordinance that could come about that would change the overlay districts and would limit that to only three overlay districts and get, in, in that getting rid of the old Beach area. The issue with this is, I don't think it's fair to Mr. Low or the citizens of Virginia Beach to make these kinds of decisions on a proposal that may or may not happen, especially one that hasn't even been tabled yet. Another concern was that there's a policy of not granting short-term rentals west of Baltic, and again, this is founded in something that isn't, hasn't become an ordinance and was actually based on a proposed ordinance that was indefinitely deferred by this city, this city council. And additionally, Mr. Bow meets all of the requirements set out in Section 241.2. He's agreed to 17 additional conditions, some of which go above and beyond the, what's required in the ordinance, and this includes limiting bookings to one booking for every seven consecutive days, revoking his right to obtain a special event permit, and limiting the house to only eight, eight guests overnight, as well as ensuring that there's no parties. Mr. Bow, Mr. Low is planning to use a professional management company, they'll have 24-hour complaint service, that someone will be at the house within 30 minutes of, of a call. And so, since, since Mr. Low's application meets all the requirements of the current short-term rental ordinance as written, we respectfully ask that you approve this application.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Or the representative of the applicant? There being none, do we have any other speakers? There being none, do we have any other speakers?
Yes, Mayor. Barbara Messner. And then the remaining two speakers are via WebEx. Ms. Messner?
I couldn't begin to list all the reasons why these shouldn't be approved. As I've stated before, I lived at 509 24th Street for 10 and 1/2 years. We had a little bit of crime then, but we also had flooding. Any, how many of y'all, including Mr. Tower, who's the Beach District, have driven on 24th Street? The parking lot for Colonial Manor is flooded. The people have to wear boots to get out of their car year-round. We have flooding problems. And the 600 block is directly across the street from Virginia Beach Middle School. You have year-round rentals in order to make money for the beach and have events year-round. You've got the sports center over there, you know, going year-round. You pick and choose which events. There was a missing person that the police, you know, didn't even activate and let the media know, residents let the media know, and this poor woman died. We don't have enough police. Short-term rentals is not a priority. Having affordable housing and a safe city is a priority and low taxes. We pay a hell of a lot of taxes, and we don't have public safety. So as I said, you're all responsible for anything that happens. And the applicant didn't even show up. And when they say they have professional management, why isn't it named? Who is it? Is it Atkinson, like it is at the North End? I mean, we have a right to know who it is. And I've stated before, Mr. Tahan is not here. I've stated that every place that is like a mini hotel or a rental property should have a sign out front with the name of the owner, just like the hotels have the name and the number. They should be accountable. Thank you.
So one of the speakers is not on WebEx, but so Carrie Clark, is she there? Carrie Chick, if you would please pause two to three seconds before beginning. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. I have to apologize that I'm not there. I'm six months pregnant, and so it's very iffy on how I feel. My name is Carrie Chick, and my family lives in the direct next neighboring property. So we're right to the left of it in a single-family home. First off, I completely understand the charm of investing in this neighborhood. It's why we decided to buy our home and grow our family here. We are close to the front of the boardwalk, but nestled away from loud noises of vacationers of the oceanfront. And if you've ever been around the neighborhood in the evening, you will see families walking their dogs, kids playing in the park, and people smiling and waving at one another. It's truly a gem. But to be blunt and to the point, this is not the case for this house or the nature of this rental. This house has been an issue in our community since it was built, but thankfully, over the past years, there have been lovely long-term renters residing on the property. The new owners who have applied for this short-term permit not only have never lived here, do not live nearby, but do not plan on living here for the unforeseen future. Despite the attempt to reason away these issues during the last hearing by the rental property company, it is hard to not see the writing on the wall. This is going to be a weekly vacation house that will bring loud and not only always desirable out-of-town guests, just like the rental less than a block away that brought in a guest who not only pulled out a gun and shot it multiple times, but also had a car chase through the neighborhood at this end of January. I need to consider the safety of my seven-year-old stepson and my baby girl that is due in July. I cannot stand back quietly and allow these situations to continue. The decisions that you all are making here tonight and over the course of the upcoming months is setting the precedence for the future of communities like Old Beach. While short-term permits may all look the same in application, there's a clear difference between a local resident renting a room in their in-law suite versus an out-of-town owner renting a large house geared to vacation partiers. We understand that based upon these decisions, local long-term residents like ourselves, who chose to live here for a family environment, may slowly migrate out of the area, turning Old Beach into a continued extension of the boardwalk. We will continue to voice our concerns to the community that we have planned to have our forever home in. We ask that you align with initial vote to reject this as a short-term rental and to consider finding ways to clearly separate smaller and locally-owned short-term rentals that want to share the community experience versus outside investments, which only want to expand the oceanfront and slowly eliminate the community that we now love. Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Moss has a question.
Thank you, ma'am, for calling in. We always like to hear from the neighborhood. But you, I think you alluded to before this home was rented on a long-term basis, that it was more of a, some kind of weekly or short, some kind of additional kind of, I'll call it cyclical or cycled through rental property. Is my understanding of your comment correct? And if it is, I have a follow-on question.
Ms. Chick, if you would just pause two to three seconds. Thank you.
So as of right now, the previous owners rented it out long-term to a family that's been there for the last couple of years.
I thought I heard you say prior to that long-term rental that there had been a different situation at that property when it was rented on less than a long-term basis, but I may have misunderstood you. Did I misunderstand you?
Ms. Chick?
Yes, it's, as far as I know, at least while we have lived next door, it's only been to that family, and it's been long-term.
Very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers?
So the applicant's representative, Mr. Byers, you'll have three minutes for rebuttal. If you would just pause two to three seconds. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the comments, and I recognize the concerns. The management, the manager that will be managing the property, his name is Scott Westfall. He's had eight-plus years of managing real estate properties. He's local. He cares about the community. And to some of the other comments, Mr. Low and his family, they actually frequent Virginia Beach, as I said, quite often. They have family in the area. And the purpose of this house really was, they saw the house, they found an opportunity to get a house that they'll eventually live in, you know, albeit 10 years sooner than expected, but they found this house, it's perfect for their family. And so they jumped on the opportunity, and their intention is to live here and make this a family home. This short-term rental isn't a long-term thing for them. So, you know, I appreciate the concerns, but this house won't be used for short-term rentals. It's not an investment property in the sense that, you know, it's just to make money off of, this is a house that they eventually will live in. And additionally, they, there is a condition on the house that it will only be rented one day for, or one time for every seven consecutive days. The Low's intention is to rent it for seven days and try to limit the number of rentals and make them as long as possible. The Low's also planning to vet each applicant to their rental. They're only planning on soliciting this rental on VRBO. They plan on being very involved, along with Scott Westfall, to make sure that people who will respect this area are the only ones who do rent it.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Tower.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have some questions for staff. Bobby's on. Mr. Tahan, I, this is a real, this is, these are the questions that I had emailed you ahead of time. I had questions, I had concerns, and I realized that there is a section in the resolution that are, a recommendation number 11 about this potential, I guess, accessory dwelling unit that is a part of the property. And I'm trying to understand how, through the process of evaluating the application, why that, I guess, apartment unit was not considered a additional bedroom? And if, I guess, I'm asking with the reasoning why it wasn't included as an additional bedroom. I understand, I guess, in correspondence that the applicant's representation has sent that they don't, they don't use it as a bedroom, but for the purposes of our planning process, wouldn't any space that could potentially be used as a bedroom be considered one through the application process? And then the other, the other question I have is in relation to enforcement, if it is in fact that number 11 accessory structure should not be used or occupied as a short-term rental, what is the, I guess, the plan? How do we intend on enforcing that? My concern is, is that, you know, we grant this application, and then they have the ability to, you know, I guess, you know, for whatever they're using it for now, potentially use it as a fifth bedroom. So I just appreciate some clarification on that. Thank you.
Mr. Tahan, if you would pause two to three seconds. Thank you.
Councilmember Abbott, so what we do in order to assure that we are being consistent with the interpretation of the number of bedrooms is we go by what the real estate assessor has on file. The real estate assessor does have on file that this does have only four bedrooms. We do not do a full interior inspection of the property when we do these. Typically, we only do site inspections to assure the site is properly upkept. Interior inspections are very difficult many times. As you've seen with the garages, we will have the applicant provide us photos of the garages and other things in the interior of the building. We did not pull that additional information because we didn't have that showing as being an issue. As far as this dwelling, the other dwelling unit you're noting that was found on Zillow, the dwelling unit that I understand, or what is being called a dwelling unit, is not an accessory structure. It's actually a part of the home. It's a separate area of the home, and the applicant probably will need to explain where that's located. Bedrooms typically, per the building code, would need to meet a specific size requirement of 70 square feet and also have an egress window. So though there is potential for the ability to call them bedrooms by size, they may not technically meet all the other requirements. So as far as this room, because we were not aware of it, when we did our research, we're unsure what its makeup is, but it does not show up on the real estate assessor's record as being another bedroom.
Okay.
I have a follow-up question, Miss Abbott, as a consequence of that?
Yep, Mr. Moss.
It looks to me, when I was driving, that there was a separate entrance to the property that she is describing, separate from the main entrance of the house. So how does the factor that that has a separate exterior entrance to that particular room, as you called it, how does that enter into your assessment process of that property? Or were you cognizant of the fact when you did your assessment that there in fact was a distinct and except external entrance to the home?
Mr. Tahan?
Councilmember Moss, we were not aware of the disposition of the room and how it accesses the rest of the house by the separate entrance. So it does appear that there may be another entrance that there is clear access to. Many of the homes of this size typically may have a side entrance, and so it didn't raise any flags to staff when we did our site inspection to try to decipher if there was something that was done without permits or inappropriately.
So not having been aware of that at the time you did your assessment, now being cognizant of that fact, would being cognizant of that fact have any material effect on the assessment that you draw? And what professional concerns might you have that could lead to downstream issues that this body needs to be aware of?
Councilmember Moss, if that unit is distinctly separate and not a portion of this home, and we'd have to do a site inspection to assure, or perhaps the applicant provide us additional information, it would potentially be considered a two-family unit, which was done without approval. And so that could, that would be a zoning violation. So that would be a different type of violation that could not be cured by the conditional use permit for a short-term rental, and we would seek to have them correct it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Old Beach District overlay, which has existed for, I think, more than 15 years, was started to preserve the historic status of this neighborhood as one of the most important residential, first residential areas within the resort area. And I think the people in this neighborhood have been, have got, have put up with, if you want to use those words, I'm sure they did, some of them welcomed it, some of them didn't, a density of short-term rentals within the, within the Old Beach District that they already are feeling strained. I've received emails and numerous calls about this unit and others, but this is the one in front of us today. And while I appreciate Mr. Low's intent, and I take no issue with any of it, although the items that he presides as being sort of extra and above are the same things we're requiring of every other applicant, so I don't give any particular credit to those. I think the density of this area and the objections of the neighbors to adding to that density, and our own recognition as a city of the special nature of this residential area, I will move to deny this application.
Second.
Motion to deny in a second. Any other conversation? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Lucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to 0, this application has been denied.
Okay, the last item on the agenda, number seven, DND Creations LLC, Daniel and Kelly Jo David Revocable Trust for a Conditional Use Permit, Raise Short-Term Rental at 2621 Highland Meadows Way in Princess Anne.
The applicant is participating via WebEx, Kelly Jo David. If you would please pause two to three seconds before beginning. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for being here tonight and looking at my, possibly approving my short-term rental. My husband and I are grandparents now. We've raised our family in this Landstown home. We are 10 miles from the beachfront. We are 10 miles from Sand Bridge, and we are 10 miles from Mundon Point Park. We have raised daughters that have been travel volleyball players. So we have rented through Airbnb and VRBO many times throughout the United States and really enjoyed our hostesses throughout the years. So now that we're empty nesters, we live very close to the Virginia Beach Field House, to the soccer complex, to the baseball diamonds, and to the YMCA that also hosts like swim meets. So we would like to offer our home as a short-term rental. We currently have been renting a room over our garage. We have a full-size bedroom with full-size bathroom over our garage, and we've been renting it out for over 12 years to just people that may need to save some money or building a house, or just renters. So we would like to open our whole house up, our entire house, to rent so that we can actually take a vacation, and maybe we can leave the premises. We'd like to have the option to do that. So we would like to, approval for our short-term rental. We have a two-car garage. We have a four-car driveway, so we can house up to six vehicles in our parking spaces. However, we will limit our parking through the websites to only four cars per rental. We do not want a packed driveway or a street-packed. We have a very, very nice neighborhood. We've had letters of acknowledgement that we are going to participate in a short-term rental. Currently, we have it listed for three bedrooms, which means we have to stay here. So again, we're trying to open it up so that we can rent the entire house out. Our neighbors have been, have been very grateful, very appreciative, and very positive throughout. We've been working on this since October. We've been working on this since October. Again, we're two miles from all the sports facilities, so we're trying to kind of cater it to more athletic families that just need a place to lay their head, they don't have to travel to the oceanfront to, to, to rent a hotel. They can be two miles away, so they can play their sports all day, they can come here, have a home-cooked meal, some crock pots going, and enjoy a soft bed and some good showers so that they can go back into their tournament early in the morning and travel two miles down the road so that they continue their play and continue their events. We also have listed no parties. We only limit it to eight people, we have four bedrooms, so if we do rent the entire house out, it will be limited to eight people. We have no smoking on premises, again, no parties, and a limit of vehicles. We're grandparents, we're also catering it to children. We have child safety gates throughout the house, we have a crib in one of the rooms, we have high chairs, we have toddler toys, we have all kinds of different safety measures, and we also do COVID-clean electrostatic fog. We have baby monitors, we also will be staying 20 minutes down the road with my, with my father, so we will be in safe distance so that if anything comes about, we will be able to easily come back into the property. We also will be here twice a week to make sure that the pool is clean, make sure that the lawns are mowed, make sure that the house is, is fine, and that there's no discrepancies.
Okay, thank you.
The only other speaker is Barbara Messner. Ms. Messner?
Mr. Tower, your comments about the Old Beach and how wonderful it is, and you're protecting it, every, every person in the city who lives in a neighborhood, whether it's high-end or low-end, you know, it's important to them, and they, we can't find affordable housing when everything is short-term rental. I mean, this sounds like an ad for, for a hotel. You have sports tourism. When you started having crime in the 90s, you tried to find ways to, to fill the hotel rooms. People didn't want to come to Virginia Beach because after dark it was a problem. It's part of the reason people don't want to stay at the resort strip, and you're selective about who you're luring right now, because a lot of families never return after coming here. This one's in Princess Anne District. But the other one, you're allowing people with, with rare parking. Every time you do this, there's less and less parking for people and their company. But it should be illegal. All the parking garages were built with taxpayer dollars, parks and parking. That takes, you take money for parking garages for specific, and it's supposed to be for locals. It's not supposed to be rented for a property somewhere else that has overflow cars. What you're doing to, to have many hotels and many rentals all over the city destroying neighborhoods is outrageous. Like I said, the sports tourism she talked about, Sandbridge, Sandbridge Blue Atkinson, who started the short-term rentals at the North End, and Seabert, they rent year-round. All those kids come here and practice on the beach. We don't even have the beaches for local, there's 1.7 million people here. How many of those people, and at Virginia Beach, 650,000, how many of those people have a way to go to the beach and park? So I'm opposed, like I said, it's, you know, it's ridiculous. Thank you.
Ms. David, you have three minutes for rebuttal. If you, you are unmuted, if you'll just pause two to three seconds, thank you.
I, I appreciate her comments. However, you know, we have, like I said, grandkids, we've been travel volleyball. I think with the taxes that are paid through VRBO and Airbnb will help stimulate the economy. You know, we need, we need taxpayer dollars, we need people here, we are tourism cities, so let's make some money. You know, if I can, you know, provide my, you know, the taxes and, and help stimulate this, I think it's great. I, I want to see those baseball fields filled with people because that's what we need here. So I appreciate her concerns, but, you know, we are kid-friendly too, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley.
Ms. Henley, can you turn your microphone on, please? Thank you.
Yes, I do have some questions for the applicant. In the letter that you sent to your neighbors asking for their support, you said that you and your husband would be either staying in the room over the garage or 10 minutes away at my daughter's house. And I think you indicated that you have been doing that. If you are on the premises in the room over the garage, then this would be considered home-sharing, and you can do that without the conditional use permit. But if you're going to be vacating it and going to stay at your daughter's house, but I thought I heard you just say 20 minutes away at your father's house, so if you're going to be staying someplace else, then yes, you do, that's conditional use permit for short-term rental. But I believe if you are going to just continue renting out the house part, and you're going to stay in the garage bedroom over the garage, then you can do that, and you can continue doing that, and that's home-sharing. So is that what you have been doing, is home-sharing?
Ms. David, if you would pause two to three seconds, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, we have been home-sharing, and we do understand that we don't need approval to home-share. We are requesting our short-term, short-term rental so that we can leave the premises. My daughter lives 10 minutes down the road, my father lives in Blackwater, which is about 15 minutes, 15, 20 minutes down the road. So we have a choice of being at either location, but we would like the approval so that we can leave the premises and not have to be here, so that we can respect our renters' privacy.
Thank you. Well, you can continue to do the, the garage apartment, but this is, this neighborhood is, as some of the others that we have heard tonight, a small neighborhood with one road in and one road out. It's a cul-de-sac, I believe it said in our write-up that there are 25 houses there. I know you got approval for made of your neighbors, but we do have a letter from the nearest adjoining neighbor in opposition. There are no other short-term rentals in this area anywhere close, and I just am not comfortable in starting the trend of short-term rentals in this part of town, which is just clearly residential. If you want to do home-sharing, that is your, your choice, but I just don't think this is the place to start short-term rentals, and I'm going to make a motion to deny it.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, if we can call for the vote at this point, there is a motion to deny.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have denied this application.
Okay, at this point, Mr. Vice Mayor, can we have the appointments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nominate the following individuals: to the Arts and Humanities Commission, Winship Tower; to the Bike Ways and Trails Advisory Committee, Mark Horton; to the Clean Community Commission, Ann Manarino, Jennifer Mines; to the Community Policy and Management Team, Nancy Bloom, Joy Rios; to the Deferred Compensation Board, Stacy Hawkes, Beverly Anderson; to the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, Councilmember John Moss; to the Health Services Advisory Board, Stephen Anunciateau and Sheila Magula; to the Housing Advisory Board, Councilmember John Moss; to the Human Rights Commission, Beatrice Amberman, Rodney Burnsworth, Jamal Gunn, and Sylvia Strickland; to the In-House Pharmacy Exploratory Committee, Victoria Manning; to MEDAC, Kevin Cook and Craig Quigley; to the Personnel Board, Frank Borum, Lenitha Hudson, Susan Salafrenka; to the Planning Council, Councilmember Sabrina Wooton; to the Public Library Board, James Young, Harvest Bilante, Lynn Carwell; to the Resort Advisory Commission, Michael Mouch; to the Transition Area Inter-Facility Traffic Area Citizens Advisory Committee, Lisa Hartman and Joe Strange; to the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, Dr. Audrey Douglas Cook. Nomination, sir.
Okay, the vote is open.
Sorry, Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss? I'm sorry, Councilmember Jones, I apologize.
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
I'd like to vote aye, Madam Clark, and abstain from the appointment of Judge Tower.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
And, I was going to ask you about that.
She, you have my rack vote.
I have your nay vote for the rack.
Thank you.
Yes. By a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved those read by Vice Mayor Wood.
Okay, do we have speakers for open mic?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You need to adjourn.
Okay, at this point, we will adjourn the meeting, and we will have open mic.